Thank you for how you have washed over us and taken us all. God, we thank you for this workshop that we get on here to have, God. We ask that you help us to do what's right for Dillon County and for the citizens of Dillon County. We thank you for what we have done in the past, how you have blessed us and brought us through 2015. And so far, God, you've kept us safe in this 2016. God, we thank you for it, in your name and these and all the prayers. Amen.
Amen.
We're down number three now. We're down the combination tax.
Yeah, but sure, we got Mr. Bob Lunt here who's with the combination tax. Come up and, Bob, we got you blocked out. We want you to use.
First time I've been to a workshop, I'm not sure what you need.
You hear? You say that again?
I'm not sure what you need from me. What?
Say, is that sure what we need from him?
Yeah. We, I mean, y'all presented us with y'all's recommendations. And I don't know if all we counted, everything was exactly what y'all recommended. Then we had some other people that wanted to be heard, that they want to take people. They got to take them off another tour and then they wanted more and more. They took tourism with leg or whatever. Okay, since our council meetings a couple of months ago, I have written the oversight committee. We talked about getting an opinion from the oversight committee as to whether or not they were doing historic foundation requests qualify for combination tax or not. Okay. I sent the information to the lead staff person of the oversight committee. And she sent back a response saying that legally, the Tourism Expenditure Review Committee cannot review this issue, this and issue and opinion. I can say that the local committee feels, though these projects are local in nature and does not recommend funding the council, then that probably is your answer. Based on what you presented to me, I can tell you that my information and formal opinion as staff is that it does not appear to be more, it does appear to be more local in nature than tourism-driven under section 6-4-10 of the South Carolina Code of Laws. Sorry, we cannot be of more assistance. She didn't forward what I had asked her. Now, I can read to you what I sent to her. And so you can understand that I tried to be as detailed and I tried not to sway it one way or the other, other than give the opinion of the advisory committee.
We could talk to you.
Oh, talk to us a little louder. Okay. So what I sent to her by way of email was, "The Dillon County Accommodation Tax Advisory Committee has received requests for funding from two organizations, not only the Historical Foundation, but also the Criterion Club. The advisory committee has recommended the county council not to fund these requests because we have determined them not to qualify for funding except for one request. The two organizations do not agree with the advisory committee's recommendation. County Council has tabled a recommendation for another worthy, for other worthy projects until the Tourism Expenditure Review Committee can give us a definitive answer on this matter." The first request comes from the Dillon Historic School Foundation, or DHSF. Dillon School District Four has given the DHSF the old junior high school complex, which includes an auditorium and 100-plus-year-old school building. The focus of the DHSF is to renovate the Dillon-rated school historic site, so it will become a magnet for tourists especially interested in learning about turn-of-the-twentieth-century schools, about educational opportunities that serve a rural and small-town community in northeastern South Carolina, and will subsequently provide, one, a unique venue for showcasing local events, touring exhibits, and professionally staged productions; and, two, a spacious, completely functional, multi-faceted facility for educational programs, conventions, workshops, and extension classes offered through regional colleges and universities. By securing ATACs funding, DHSF will be better positioned to initiate site development and the complete restoration of the former high school auditorium for use as a cultural arts center, with well-planned yearly schedules that will consistently attract visitors from throughout the region, the state, and the nation. An important project planned by DHSF will be creating a council of representation from all four Dillon County performance/assembly venues with the major, if not sole, purpose of scheduling various non-conflicting events throughout the year, reinvigorating our community, attracting visitors to Dillon County, and encouraging all to return and enjoy something different and unexpected. The DHSF is making, is asking for ATACs funding for the following: initial expenses, what I titled this. A minor portion of the requested funding will be used to offset the foundation's annual expenditures, which have included postage, post office box rental, the printing costs for brochures, returned addressed envelopes, stationery and business cards, as well as entrance fees for local exhibits or displays, and registration fees for conference and workshops. The second request is anticipated expenses. The remaining portion of the requested funding will be applied to the purchase-priced Paige Seawo Studios for casting the historical, historic marker. To fund both an architecture's preliminary study, architect's preliminary study, and necessary inspections of existing utilities, to help finance any basic stabilization and building, to reimburse DHSF for the 501(c)(3) application and processing fee, and to afford charges anticipated for legal advice in any subsequent documentation and/for representation by an attorney. The DHSF anticipates attendance to proposed events to be from 100 to 1,000, with the percentage of tourists to be from 20% to 50%, depending on the specific event plan for the specific facility. The amount of ATACs requested is $20,000. The total estimated cost of planned activities is $62,760. The Dillon County ATAC Advisory Committee made the determination that the request for the initial expenses and the anticipated expenses, except for the request, except for the request to offset the cost of the historical marker or startup expenses for the organization and does not qualify for ATAC. The Dillon ATAC Advisory Committee has recommended $1,500 to help with the $2,010 expense of the historical marker. Please let me know the opinion of the review committee, so I can share it with Dillon County Council. The second request comes from the Criterion Club, a nonprofit, all-volunteer organization which operates a community center to provide wholesome recreation and community activities for children and adults of Dillon County. The organization serves economically and culturally deprived children, also of a mentally and physically handicapped. Their, the community benefits greatly from the Criterion Club's programs because it sponsors a site for the summer feeding program with the assistance of the Community Action Agency, a meeting place and location for special events for other organizations. The Criterion Club gives toys, books, and clothes to children at Christmas. The Criterion Club presents a Christmas cantata and goes caroling throughout the community and nursing homes. The club also holds a Christmas gala in Debutat at Tilling. The club gives scholarships to high school graduates and outings for young people in the community. During the summer months in particular, many family reunions, wedding receptions, class reunions, and other events are held at the Criterion Center, which being in a multitude, was bringing in a multitude of people who use the hotel, restaurant service stations, and other facilities available in Dillon. The Criterion Club is requesting $3,000. The Dillon County ATAC Advisory Committee understands that the majority of the Criterion Club's projects could be considered local and do not qualify for ATAC funding. However, their request of ATAC funding for family reunions and high school class reunions has some merit for funding. Please let me know the opinion of the review committee, so I can share it with the Dillon County Council respectfully. So, Demeta Jeter, the staff person, came back and pretty much said that these projects were local and that they did not qualify. I can go into more detail.
And who was the individual that did that? Because I thought I heard you from your open statement said that you took some of this stuff to maybe somebody on state level, they do not give an opinion, and they send it back to you, and said, "How is it local?" So sweet.
Demeta Jeter is the staff person representing the oversight committee. Now, it looks to me as they, well, wow, they allowed the advisory committee to give county council their opinion on the request. County Council will make their decisions on what they will fund. Now, what will happen after that is a report will be sent to the oversight committee for their review. They will then, if they have any questions, they'll send a letter back to the state asking them for more information. Now, in that report, it said how much was requested, how much was recommended by the advisory committee, how much was approved by county. And if we put on that report, that the advisory committee has recommended zero to be funded for that project, then I'm pretty sure the oversight committee is going to send a letter back with wanting further explanation. And the advisory committee will come back and say that we consider this local. Then county council will have to give an explanation to the review committee for them to consider whether or not they will approve that expenditure. Now, if the oversight committee does not accept that expenditure, then county council will be required to either get the money back from the organization, or the state will withhold that amount of money from the next time they send a check to the county.
My next question, sir, would be to you, is who is, what is your qualification for this money? I mean, because I'm looking at all these projects as.
What qualifies me for being on the committee?
No, sir. What qualifies these organizations such as, that you got on this form here? You start off with these projects.
Every one of these projects, these are repeat projects from year to year, that either the Chamber, the Historical Society, different organizations.
Yes, sir. But what qualifies, I understand your project, sir. My question would be, what qualifies these projects to receive this funding?
Okay. Latter Spring Fest is a festival that the oversight committee, they recognize all festivals.
Could I interrupt you a minute respectfully, sir? I want to save you some time. Certainly, I wouldn't expect you to go through all of these and explain. I just certainly want you to give me a simple explanation as to what, what's the qualification of these projects? What would qualify someone to get some of this funding, basically, as I asked you?
All of these events are scheduled events with the primary purpose of bringing people into Dillon County to attend these events.
Right. To attend these events. So that's the purpose, to bring them into Dillon County to attend these events.
And they succeed in doing that. Now, at one time, like Lakeview has a Christmas parade festival. They have a festival along with their Christmas parade. The first time I sent that in, I turned it in as a Christmas parade. It came back and said, "No, we're not, Christmas parades do not qualify for tourism events, but a festival does." So they, that oversight committee makes those determinations more so than we do.
Personally, I don't think we should go against oversight committee that wants to allocate all the money.
They, because they will hold the money back, and they'll hold everything that's due Dillon County until they're satisfied that.
But I don't understand, and I apologize, I don't understand, sir, for years, and I'm going to say this, for years, we have funded the Criterion Club, and I don't understand, you just read about all the events that the Criterion Club has, and how they bring people to Dillon County, and a lot of these people stay in our local motels, and they are not included.
They do not qualify as a definition of a tourist.
But, sir, for years, we gave this, for years, they qualified. I was, for years, they received funding. Let me say that.
For years, they received funding because there was not an oversight committee in place.
Well.
And once they, and they shouldn't have, but county council demanded, they wanted to fund the Criterion Club, and we had no problem with, I mean, we went along with the wishes of county council. But once that oversight committee came and they ruled that the Criterion Club activities, and I wrote this straight out of what was given to me. And it's all local, it's a local community agency that does good, but it doesn't do anything for tourism.
The same thing with Dillon County celebrating Main Street. That's local. What did they do with that? I mean, both of them bringing people to Dillon.
The Criterion Club's class reunion and family reunions are bringing Dillonites back to Dillon.
Absolutely.
A Dillonite is not considered a tourist of Dillon.
But there's a whole other host of other stuff you just read that Criterion Club does.
I'm only telling you what I've been told now. If you want, it's still your decision. I'm just advising you, and that's what, I don't want to argue, I just want to give you the fact.
And I would apologize if I seen if you argued him with me. That's not my demeanor. Mr. Chairman, a young lady in the back, you want to acknowledge her or not? I don't know you to cheer. Guess what?
I just have a question. Good morning, everyone. I wanted to ask a question and find out more information as to.
Do you mind, before you get started, the standard, give your name and, your name's me.
All right. Good morning. My name is Natalia McCloud. I'm, I am a resident of Dillon County, and I am with the Dillon Historic School Foundation. And my question is to the gentleman standing for this moment, I just wanted more information as to what is your definition, or what is the definition for a tourist? I just wanted to make some note.
Can't find it in this law that I follow. But it says that anyone that travels from a 50-mile radius. Is what I, what was the first time, when the first, when the law first came out, it had a definition of a tourist as being someone who would travel to your area from a 50-mile radius.
And I'm guessing an amendment to that definition would probably be, since it was just discussed that it can't be a Dillonite, like, because.
They don't consider, they don't, they consider family reunions as being a local-type event, and a class reunion being a local event. Bringing back local people and not really bringing people into Dillon that, they would come, they would see them as primarily coming to stay with family and not staying in rooms. And this is all funded by room tax. It doesn't have anything to do with restaurants or anything other than a room tax. Now, City of Dillon has a tax that taxes to, but not the combination tax.
But you're limiting the Criterion Club. You're saying just for family reunions, but your early statement, your early statement that you read included a whole lot of stuff other than family reunions that they have there.
Well, yeah, but all of those, you can look at those, I mean, you got your summer feeding program, you got, all those programs are local kids programs.
And you have Gospel Sings and all that stuff, and civic groups.
And I tried to, I tried to separate that from, and I asked her, you know, I tried to get them to approve class reunions and family reunions, but she, she has the opinion that it's a local thing, too.
She has an opinion?
It's her opinion now. What will happen is, apparently, we have to wait, and y'all have to go ahead and decide what you're willing to do. We send a report to them before the committee will act on it. That's, I would rather it had the committee to act on it prior to giving them, giving the money out, if I was county council.
I know we've done it in the past, we haven't had any problems. And I look at some of these other projects, I just don't see them no different than the Criterion.
But in the past, may have made sure that the Criterion Club got the money until it became, until we got the oversight committee, and then, then we weren't, the advisory committee never did recommend for the Criterion Club.
So if the money went out, oversight committee rejected, then we would have to repay the money?
If the state oversight committee says that it's not a qualified event or expense, then you would, you would have to either, the organization has to return the money, or the state will withhold that money from the next check that they send to you.
It sounded like to me, the problem is in the wording of the Criterion Club.
I took the words.
If people worded different, there wouldn't be a problem there. Didn't you just say earlier, though, that you talked with the state, and they pushed it back down to the locals? Did you make that statement earlier?
I talked to, well, I sent this email to Demeta. I haven't talked to her directly. Now, I did talk, there's a, I'm on the PD Tourism Commission. I've been on PD Tourism Commission for over 20, 25 years now. And our tourism director, Fran Willis, is part of the South Carolina Association of Tourism Directors. There's like seven of these districts around. Okay. I asked, and she receives accommodation tax funding for what they do with Tourism Commission. And I took, I took the recommendation of the Dillon School Foundation to her without comment. I said, "Fran, would you read this, and then give me your opinion?" She said, it was her opinion that it did not qualify either. She's my other expert, is what I'm trying to tell you. And she's, she's returning today from Pittsburgh. She left last Thursday to promote a travel show for this area, and she's on a plane, as we speak, coming back from that, from that travel show, trying to promote our area.
But, sir, do we get a straight answer from them? Because I'm hearing opinions, opinions, opinions. And everybody in this room has an opinion, and certainly everyone sitting up here has an opinion. How can we get a straight answer?
Clay is your other expert on combination tax.
Clay, Clay, Mr. Expert, can you have anything you like?
The only thing I know to do is, like I said, send it in, see if it's allowed. I mean, hey, but it, like I said, they may not, they may not approve it, but I know what those rules are and how to put that.
Wouldn't it be better if we sent all of this in, and they would give us an opinion on everything?
Well, they've already approved that year after year after year.
Everybody approved the Criterion Club year after year after year.
No, 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 they never, well, no, they never did approve it because there was not an oversight committee to approve. Once the oversight committee was put into place is when they cut the funding out of the Criterion Club. Between the time the law was taken, it took in effect in 1985 until the time the, until the oversight committee was added to the law, there was no one to review what would be happened.
But our bottom line, county council can change any of this. They can adjust these numbers. It's left up to the county council.
County council can, we made the recommendation, we advise, we are in an advisory capacity. We advise, we.
How long you been on that board?
Since 1985.
Eighty-five. Call us some members of it. Can I have a list of your members?
Yeah, I got one. Okay. You got Richard Schaper is on the committee, Johnny Lewis, Charles McCarn, retired from the bank, Johnny Braden, John Rogers, that works at Hostel, Corky Lane, and John Charles from Lakeview.
Who appointed that committee, sir?
You did.
We do. That's what I do. You do.
Now, we serve at your, at your place.
Because you know, as we, your council appointed we. I mean, I never appointed anybody.
I was appointed, what, the reason how I came on being part of the combination advisory committee, back in 1984, I was vice president of the Chamber. Sylvie McClellan was president of the Chamber. She heard about the law. Senator Jack Lindsey is the one who actually wrote the law from, Senator from Waukesha County. Okay. Sylvie told me that, you know, we got the damage of the league coming up in 1985, our 75th anniversary. She said, "You know, this combination tax might help us out with the Chamber." So I went to the workshops. I went to about three different workshops. Claude Graham and Mr. Arnett, Horace Arnett, attended those workshops. They saw me there. I went on as a representative of the Chamber. I didn't tell Claude or Mr. Horace that I was going to be there, but they would see me there, and they knew that I had listened, and they saw me as being knowledgeable, and so then, because Dillon County, Dillon County received more than $50,000 in combination tax that first year, they had to form an advisory committee. So they'd been there, they appointed me as chairman, and put everybody else on the committee except for Johnny came on later, and John Charles came on later.
Who's John Charles?
John Charles Rogers from Lakeview. I called him John Charles.
He's a black member of the committee. You see where the problem is? I mean, with me, the problem with me. But you're shooting down a black organization.
No, you're not. No, 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 I'm not. I'm not. I'm being as fair as I can be, and I really do resent that.
I believe you being fair.
I resent that.
I believe you being fair.
Because I'm looking at each one of the organizations.
But the folks that I have to answer to won't see it that way.
But they're not tourism-related, they're a little group.
You understand where I'm coming from.
I know what you're saying.
And you don't think, you don't think celebrating Main Streets and Locals, you think that's one of those?
They bring in people from out town, all the festivals, too.
The next meeting, that guy at the Criterion Club, where they bring in people, I want you to call him, and you go together. I promise you, there are people coming in to that Criterion Club that's traveling more than tomorrow. I promise you it's happening. Here's where the problem.
What I would do, what I would do is go ahead, I mean, if you want to go ahead and allocate money to the Criterion Club, I'd do that, send in the report, plead for a response. It's the only way we're going to get a response from that oversight committee, is to send in, before we, before we write a check, or make sure that those people understand that you may be asking that money back.
Well, you do it for the whole thing, I mean, for this whole life.
No, you're going to have.
We need to hold up for.
No, 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 you're going to have to do it for, we would like for you to go ahead and act on the whole, all the requests, and you can hold up the money until, until we hear back from the committee, if you want to do it that way. I mean, I don't, it doesn't bother me none. I don't have any interest in this money.
All these projects have already been approved.
They've been, y'all approved them last year, every one of them. There's not a one that they own question. They will support festivals, they'll support the Historical Society.
You can ask, you can ask some questions.
I have the law here for the combination tax. And it says in the law that one of the requirements for tourism-related expenditures, construction, maintenance, and operation of facilities for civic and cultural activities, including construction and maintenance of access in the nearby roads and utilities for the facilities. And under code section 6-4-10, which is on page five, I think, in the law. And under code section six four ten, which is on page five, I think, in the law.
Okay, and the only thing that, that your proposal has, um, all your, in the advisory committee's opinion, okay, let me go over this. Okay, minor portion of the requested funds will be used to offset the foundation's annual expenditures, which have included posters, post office box rental. Okay, those things, um, we don't see, return address envelope, since there's a startup cost for your organization, we don't see that as being tourism related expenditures. The advisory committee does not. Um, the remaining portion of the requested funds will be applied to the purchase price of paid C one studios to cast in historic markets. You see that as.
Well, actually, we had no guidelines to go by when we made this application. We didn't even find out on the computer for a while. So if we had, you had this information, if we had what we could ask for, we would do that. But we do need some help.
But at this point in your, you're, you're in the organization, the advisory committee feels that you're in the organization. Things of your, you don't even know if your utilities, you said in here that you wanted to do a study on the utilities. And we see that as, as being the startup phase or the initial phase. You ask for money for the five oh one C three application. You have to have, they asked on that form whether or not you do that for those five oh one C thirty.
We tried to get a fund from a bit, uh, this office to apply. And we were told, you know, that there were none available right here, but we could get one in the Chamber of Commerce office. And also, I would like to interject right here that I was told by a very reliable member of the advisory committee, after we met with them that day, and it turned out that the advisory committee had not met in two years. So I'm wondering, you know, how you could decide so many things not meeting.
We need to meet, or ask meeting.
And so nobody requested a meeting until the Dillon County Historic Foundation. We requested a meeting and we met with you and we were rejected. When it's all in, I got proof of it in all of this material I've got here, that we would qualify. And yet you hear, as Mr. Scott said, all these other organizations. And you wonder how in the world they got approved and we got turned down. And I gave at the other meeting example of Taste of Dillon. There was no tourism involved in that and they got seven, sixty, seven thousand dollars. And, you know, so I think the discrepancy.
Something's not right here.
In the system.
I'd like to know why you're just automatically carried over from year to year. Why can't, why don't you have applications every year, a time set, get the applications in, act on it?
We wait until we accumulate money for the combination tax that the treasurer has for Dillon County before we spend it.
Well, who is a tourism promotion organization for Dillon County?
The Chamber of Commerce.
Well, the Chamber of Commerce doesn't have any signage up saying tourist center. They have very little information out at the welcome center, because I went out there and looked and there's very little out there. So where does all that money, how is that spent? That's a big hunk of money.
They have, well, they have staff that answers upon that, that gives out information that way in, in all kinds of ways.
If, 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 if they're, they're turned down and Criterion Club is turned down, they don't get the money. Where does the money go in? Back in the pool?
Yeah, but it's got to be spent within a two-year period. It stays in Dillon County. If you don't have an event to spend the money on that qualifies, after a two-year period, they'll take it back. The state will take it back.
What about?
Suppose, and I said it earlier. According to what you call tourism, suppose, and these ladies are making a good part there. You guys look at tourism one way, someone else look at it another way. Now, what definition are you using? Congressman Scott was just telling you, you say that people that used to live in Dillon that come back there not tourists, you don't look at them as tourists.
That's, I mean, I'm willing to, the advisory committee is willing to try and recommend money for, for, for the Criterion Club.
You need to work with Dillon. You need to work with Dillon. That's why I said not work against Dillon.
For their, maybe, you know, for their family reunions and classroom unions and bring it to, if it passes mustard on the state level.
How about historical foundations? Are you willing to cut them a check also?
Yeah, no.
No? Well, how do you decide when you're willing to imp?
Because there's, how many tourists are they going to bring into Dillon?
How many tourists does the golf course bring to Dillon?
Yeah.
They're still in, once they get past their, once they get past their organization, organizational stage, then I see them qualifying. When they start having events in the, in their auditorium, they will qualify for a combination tax.
It says here in the law that you can even type of the construction in the auditorium. Could I, could I read this from the combination tax paper about? Facilities for civic and cultural events. Under code section six four ten four B three, monies in the tourism related fund can be used for construction, maintenance, and operation of facilities for cultural and civic activities, including construction and maintenance of access and other nearby roads and utilities for facilities. Eligible expenditures under this category can include the cost incurred in building a civic center, a museum, or a coliseum. Tourism related monies can also be, as stated above. Would that, it should pay salaries? That's, that's just of it. It sounds like it includes everything that the Dillon Historic School Foundation would like to have funds for. And, you know, the Dillon County Theater gets five thousand. And, you know, the chairman, the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce is in charge of the Dillon County Theater, does work for them at this time. So, you know, there's a lot of monies going in one area of, of the organ, of the county. So I think, you know, I, I only want, I think y'all to be fair, you know. Share your tolls, not one person or two people grab all the tolls and go home, so.
Work together.
Let me say this now, this is not your opinion, this is the law you just wrote.
What I did.
That's the law she just wrote. You're giving me somebody's opinion, this lady here, has sent me to school and taught me well. She bought the long hand with her. But I do agree, question I gotta ask you, who determines how much money each organization get? Who makes that determination?
The advisory committee makes a recommendation. You determine how much each organization get.
Their recommend, I don't even think their recommendation is fair because the other people that need money, and somebody says, I want eight thousand dollars, okay, we grant it to you. That's playing the act of God. I think if there's other people out there that need help, then that money should be split up. Where everybody qualifies should be able to get some of that funding. Not just give me eight thousand dollars.
Excuse me, but I don't think enough people really know about the combination tax and what it's used for. Dex's article in the paper was very informative, but that's been a long time coming. Because from my experience, to even get an application to apply, if I'd been, you know, tired and get disgusted, I'd given up. But what I did, I went home and got on the computer and printed my own application. And that's how I got the application. But I think people should know where you get applications, what it's for, and who's due, and when it's due, and that, I think the committee that's in charge should be meeting every month or on a regular basis. And I don't think one group or organization should be getting a majority of the funds. So that's my.
Anybody else here that want to say? Mr. Newton, wouldn't it be better if we would come up and advertise all this real good and the heavy with Dillon Hurley? That way you might have some outside people wanting to come in from other parts of the county. They just got something, they'd like to have some of this money.
Might be a good idea.
That might be, you know, that might be something we might want to do. Advertise it real good.
We're open to any and all organizations that request.
That way you do, you know, everybody can have a chance to get through this.
You know, we try to advise y'all as best we can.
I understand. You're doing a good job, we just want to make sure it's fair to all citizens of this county.
Who questions the advisory committee's decision? Anyone from the state, the county?
Only after, after y'all approve the expenditure at the end of the year, after y'all do approve these expenditures, they will send in a report to the, to the oversight committee for them to decide.
Well, the day of the workshop, we're not going to vote or anything today, but these councils will come up at, at regular council meeting and they decide to fund something and they feel like it's tourism related and we, they're going to vote to do it. And if it passes, it doesn't be fine with me, but it's possible that we'll have to pay the money back.
Right, you need to understand that.
You know.
Have we ever had to pay any back in the past?
No, so far, but we, like I said, but we, you know, we got.
We, we have had, the ones, we have been questioned on some items, but we've been over the explain.
We do. Have you ever been questioned on the Criterion Club?
No.
And you had to pay them back? If you had to pay anything back, he just said you didn't, now y'all two get together.
Well, the last couple of years, we didn't, the Criterion Club didn't.
Because we got, we got the opinion that it was local before we did it.
We ain't lost it, but.
So we have.
We ain't have so much money, you know, to give, if somebody comes in, like, get charged to foundation and want twenty thousand or twenty-five thousand. If we funded that, we'd cut everybody else off.
We've never, we've never funded, we've never funded any organization a hundred percent of their request.
Mr. Sherman, can I make this statement here? I'd like to see that we would go in, we would, um, look at each member of this board again and give this setting council opportunity to vote and pick someone to be on that board. Maybe want to reconstruct it, because they said that board been put together since two thousand one, two thousand two. I, I don't know whether I got appointed on there or not. I don't remember appointing anybody to that board. I think it would be fair.
We got something like, a lot of spring festivals coming up in Haitian next month. And they, they can't have this, they get funded, we're hard to fund some of these things until.
Right, until we can reconstruct.
You got a little lady you want to talk to?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to clarify again, um, if you just stated that you've never given a hundred percent funding of the course to the amount. But you did say that we may qualify for funds based on the historic marker. And what was the amount that you said?
Thirteen hundred, about two thousand and ten dollars.
And I just would like to make a suggestion that maybe we could, um, work together more so that other civic organizations will have a better idea as to what are the actual qualifications? Because as I alluded to earlier, the idea of a tourist, as they were saying, even with the, um, Celebrate Main Street here in Dillon, I know a lot of people come from Marion, you know, other surrounding areas, but that's not outside of the fifty mile radius. But I do know that a lot of the vendors come from beyond the fifty mile radius. And I think that maybe, just maybe, we need to look into things. And another thing that I would like to look into is the golf courses. I'm not sure how much money is allotted to the golf course, but, um, no money, okay, that's fine. Um, but like I said, I was just asking a question. So I just, I would like to suggest that maybe we could form some type of meeting outside of just this workshop so that other organizations will be more informed as to qualifications.
Yeah, we can do that, we can bring in people.
Mr. Newton, one last question. If council decides to give some of these other organizations money, they gonna have to take some off of somebody that's here, is that right? So they won't be adding on them, just.
No, you don't owe them, you got forty-nine thousand dollars.
Okay, so we got to figure out, out of that, okay. Hey, Mr. Newton, let me, let me clear myself, because I think you took me wrong there. First of all, I think you're doing a great job. It's hard to get people to work in any kind of office now. What you guys are doing is good. But I, I want you to understand where I was coming from. We in two thousand sixteen and we have an advisory committee that's advising how to spend taxpayers' money. That's where I was coming from. And we live in a county that's probably fifty-fifty black, but we have a committee that don't have anybody else. Feedback that I be getting from my constituents, either I'm a black councilman, is what Congressman Scott was talking about. Look at this list. They're not going to look at it and say, well, uh, it's right. But they're gonna look at it and say, you took the only black organization on that list and you denied them funding. Now, you understand what I'm saying?
But we don't, and you understand, we don't look at it.
I understand what you said. But go back, that's what Congressman Scott. Um, and what I said earlier, you need, just work with these ladies. Work the Criterion Club. Come back to the county, they come back to the county. But, but you gotta work with Dillon County.
What is, what is this twenty-five thousand dollars Dillon County General Fund?
Okay, in the law, in the law, the first twenty-five thousand dollars that's collected goes to the county's general fund, okay? That's taken off the top. You can spend it any way you want to.
That twenty-five thousand, we spend it any way we want to?
Any way you want to. The next five percent of the total amount goes into a general fund. Then the next thirty percent goes in the tourism advertising. The next sixty-five percent goes into these projects here.
Who does the tourism and advertising go to?
It's the chamber. They are recognized as the tourism agency for Dillon County.
What would be the total amount the Chamber of Commerce gets of combination tax? Would be that?
This year?
I mean, any year.
Well, this year, the indication of, because it was in the paper.
Yeah, it was in the paper.
Now, y'all searching that, sir, can I ask you one quick question?
What?
The twenty-five thousand dollars in the general fund, it is included in the forty-nine thousand dollars. So that's twenty-five thousand dollars that we can add to the forty-nine thousand dollars to use any way we feel. Okay, so this is twenty-five thousand dollars.
In the past.
They've already used all that twenty-five thousand, Clay, they've already been using that.
I mean, we had a hundred.
It goes in his revenue to the county.
Yeah, we already using that. We need, we need not go. He's using plus, or paying for the side. So we don't have additional twenty-five thousand dollars, Clay, in the general fund if we can, if we can use towards this?
We just budget for the twenty-five.
But we ain't no great, we already been using it this year for other projects.
Well, it's just a part of the general fund. It's just a general fund revenue.
Well, we got to.
We have to calculate.
With receipts. They have to show that.
The county council actually received, with the five percent, they received twenty-eight thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars to put into the general fund from May that. Tourism related advertising was twenty-two thousand six hundred sixty-nine dollars. And you have to have a tourism, an organization that is involved in tourism promotion. And y'all have designated the Chamber of Commerce as that.
And how does a chamber do that? That twenty-five, yeah, how much, what's the total amount they get? Twenty-five thousand?
All I do is, is do the math, you'll have to ask the county that.
Okay.
Can you add that, Clay? Can you tell us partly what that is?
You will say.
Um, it's just whatever event is going on in Dillon County. I've got to promote the motels, the hotels, the restaurants. If someone receives a speeding ticket in Dillon County, they're calling me to find out whether they pay it or not. And I know the police officer tells them. I've got to know attorneys, I've got to know what's going on. I've got to know what's going on in Lada, at the community center, or in Lakeview, the community center. I've got to know all festivals, I've got to know where they can stay, when there are things going on in Darneton County. And like the race, they're asking me, do we have motel rooms here available? I'm promoting Dillon County every, every moment.
Yeah, somebody request the information like, see me groups.
So you get a speeding ticket?
If they get a speeding ticket in Dillon County, I receive a number of telephone calls asking me, where do I pay it? How do I pay it? You know, they can pay it online now, but they'll call, and then I've got to break down, did you get it in the city? You know, they can pay it online now, but they'll call. And then I've got to break down, did you get it in the city limits? Did you get it here? Did you get it there? Did you get it in Lata? Did it in Lakeview? I can't recommend the, did I receive the city, uh, city ticket in the city of Dillon? I can't recommend an attorney that's the city of Dillon's attorney, you know? That's not going to work. So I've got to be able to do that, or the chamber has got to do that. When I say, uh, I give in the chamber.
If somebody got a speeding ticket, that's too real. That'd be too real.
No, uh-uh, no. But it's just people calling. They're calling the chamber for information. But I mean, we've got, the chamber's got to be able to direct where these telephone calls go. And, you know, when people are looking about coming to the area, they need, I've been asked about leash loans and things like this. We have to be aware of just about everything that's going on in the community and try to, you know, promote the whole community. I receive, the chamber receives.
You do a great job on that, Senator. I don't have a problem.
Okay. We get a lot of requests about the state park. You know, I've got to be able to respond to that. And just, just different things. Just whatever's going on, I receive questions about restaurants, hotels, Abington Mall, you know, just you name it. And thank you for compliment. I appreciate it.
What are those that do yourself the chamber?
I was just going to say, you keep a record of where that money is spent, or you just put it in your pool and.
I probably don't divide every, the chamber probably doesn't divide every penny out which goes towards, you know, me promoting Lata or Lakeview or Dillon or Lata and stuff like this. That's going to be almost impossible to do. Uh, you know, but I try to keep it just as much as possible and just make sure, you know, just everything. I, there's myself and my secretary with only two staff, and I have a wonderful board of directors.
Yeah, but the law made it so that you had a advertising, among the city side for advertising, and you had to designate a tourism-related organization, which is the chamber. Now, prior to the law, back in nineteen eighty-four, Dillon County Chamber of Commerce paid eight thousand dollars in dues to the chamber. When y'all decided to make the chamber your designated authority, you cut out that eight thousand and saved it. You didn't, you're not paying dues to the chamber.
My question still hasn't been answered about how much money involving tourism goes to the chamber. There's several hots of money that go to.
But they have different, they got different events during the year.
No, I'm not talking about events. I'm talking about accommodations tax funds that goes to the chamber because they are the nonprofit organization that promotes tourism in Dillon County.
They, their advertising dollars is twenty-two thousand six hundred fifty-nine dollars and seventeen cents.
That's just one fund.
For this year.
There's more money that goes for that, too.
Not that a lot.
Oh, well, in that list of, uh, funding that you have that has organizations, they get, I think, eight more thousand there, right?
They get, oh, you're talking about like the Taste of Dillon?
Well, that's one, that's not, that's not what I'm talking about. It's tourism funds that come in for tourism is, is.
I don't know what to go with.
I reckon, I reckon what she's saying is what I'm looking for. Certainly, I understand the importance of the chamber. We need a chamber. Chamber does a good job. Question, part of what she's referring to is the one I'm looking at here. There's nothing on this accommodation tag that tells you how much you're giving the chamber. Have you not given the chamber nothing this year?
The chamber is sponsoring the Dillon County Celebrate Main Street. And they get the money, they get the money for that event.
Celebrate Main Street is our festival downtown that we work with the city of Dillon. We do that.
So why wouldn't you have it under the chamber instead of?
Because it's not the chamber. It's a festival that we work with. And stuff like Lata Spring Fest is not under the town of Lata.
We group.
Or Lakeview, it's not under. We group it by, um, events, like the Taste of Dillon County. It's not a per se, but it's, you know, the chamber just kind of heads it up. It's the body that heads it up. It's an event that the chamber heads up.
Right.
And we, we.
That's what the city of Dillon putting on this stuff.
Um, I don't, but the city of Dillon.
How do they help us with that?
With the festival, they do a great deal of the advertising also, too, and, um, because they have much more money than the county does, okay? And, um, so they're able to do more and they, they're able, we work close together, but as far as figures and stuff like this, I, I, I can't, I don't have that with me. I don't know and stuff. But I know that we work very close together on different events. And with like the Taste of Dillon County, I was able to use the courtyard this year and try to bring in the restaurants and caterers promoting. So when people do come to Dillon and have events, if they're having weddings or reunions and stuff like this, and I try to get a representation, or the chamber tries to get a representation from all of Dillon County, not just the city of Dillon, not just the town of Lata, not just the town of Lakeview. We try to make it throughout. So when people come in and they want somewhere to eat and stuff like this, so they've had a little taste of it before. And we do have, you know, people that come from out of town.
But I'm gonna say this, and I'm gonna let it go a little bit. If we're going by an opinion, we'll give some some money, why don't we go by the law of what these ladies have stolen, is any part of the law, and let them qualify for that money? I mean, they got to be black and white so they qualify.
What it amounts to is the advisory committee doesn't think they're far enough along with their project to qualify for accommodation tax. If you think they are, then this year, you can.
They ran the law to it, didn't they? And the law doesn't say, doesn't give a time to take it.
Time frame.
Doesn't give a timetable. How long they should have been existing, how long they need to be existing.
Let me ask you this. If the chamber gets, say, seven thousand dollars to put on Taste of Dillon, and they spend three thousand dollars to put on Taste of Dillon, does anybody give accounts to the chamber or any organization? Would the chamber give an account of how they spent that seven thousand dollars?
It counts for the seven thousand.
Huh?
It does.
Well, you give a count.
At Taste of Dillon, it actually costs seven thousand dollars.
Um, if each of our vendors are paid, they're there, they receive something for coming and being a part. The only event, uh, vendor that has not received money has been such as the person that gave water a couple of years ago. And, um, they donated the water and promoted the business, but the vendors do. When we used to hold it at the Dillon House, the chamber with some of the profits that was away, we put in the, the chamber put in the underground electricity around the Dillon House.
Chamber did that so they could have Taste of Dillon there and the vendors could plug in.
Right.
Uh, but my question was, if you spend three thousand and you have all that left over, that goes into the chamber account, right?
Wait, what would that report be at, Clay? Clay, what would that report be at? Would you have a report?
Yeah.
Would you like to be recognized?
Well, uh, if it's supposed to promote tourism, how many tourists come in for Taste of Dillon and, uh, the festival on Main Street?
I think you should know that they're being without, outside of the fifty miles, um, free.
I honestly cannot answer that because tickets are sold. You know, we do as much as we can to help promote it. We want local people here. We want people, we have restaurants promoting also, too. I cannot.
The oversight committee does not, does not expect us to have a sign-up sheet. They, they go with our.
But you're requiring us to, uh, say what everything we're doing bring tourists in, saying we're just starting up. We're not just starting up. Y'all have no idea where we're at in, in our project. You know, and earlier you said that you didn't include restaurants, uh, with the tourism. Well, that's ridiculous.
No, this tax is only a room tax. It has nothing to do with food tax.
All right.
The city has another tax.
Okay.
What they call, I guess, a combination tax. They just, also, they tacked on some to the room and to meal.
Okay.
But that's another fund that they have total control of. It's like John said, with the, with the festival on Main Street, they, they come back, they come and supplement some of the expenses with their money. And we don't, I'm on the city accommodation tax advisory committee and we don't even talk about the festival. It's not something that comes out of, uh, out of the A-tax. The city has to have an A-tax committee, too, because they generate more than fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Um, a minute ago, it was said that because Taste of Dillon was held at the Dillon House, you all were able to put some electric, underground electrical wire in there so that it could make accommodations for the Taste of Dillon there. So if we were to work with the Chamber of Commerce and there were to be, um, say that we're going to have the Taste of Dillon at the office for, on the J. Martin facility, could there then be funds allotted to us to get the, the school or the portion of the facility up to a certain standard so that we could have it there? It's just a question.
I, again, I don't know. We'll have to see, definitely. And, um, I didn't put the electricity there so that we could just have the Taste of Dillon County there. That was also to benefit the Dillon House because it can be used for wedding receptions and, um, different meetings and things like that. So that should benefit the Dillon House. Um, we kind of outgrew the Dillon House grounds. And, um, we went to, the next place we went to was the National Guard Armory, the old, old one. And then from there to the Wellness Center and from there to the, um, courtyard, we tried it for the first time. But we wanted to be able to have, leave something at the Dillon House where it can be used for other different venues and stuff like that. So, you know, that's, there's something, you know, to be, to be found out.
Yeah, I think.
Because it's always good to have a venue, to have different venues. And that's why it's been moved around. It's not just one, you know, different area.
I like that, of moving it. And, um, I think that it would be a great idea, maybe, to, in the future, look to having it at that site, um, because it's a historical site and because the J. Martin facility could, you know, hold a large number of people. So I think that would be something for us to communicate and move forward with.
So we can work together.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. New, we, we, I mean, thank you for coming and, uh, taking this time out today and answering these questions. And, uh, uh, I think the council is pretty well got informed today really what's going on. We got some decisions we probably have to make. We got a lot of other stuff we got to take up this morning. And I appreciate all y'all coming. But right now, I'm, we're going to adjourn for about five minutes and then start, uh, the good, good, uh, great council society next.
Mr. Chairman, we, we basically, over the past years, and let me see if you tell me if I'm wrong, over the past years, uh, what we've done is we've given, different council members have given money out of the, uh, out of their recreation accounts. Harold, am I right? Harold, some of y'all gave money in the past. They have requested, um, I know the city of Dillon's going to actually be a sponsor this year. If you look on the last two pages of the handout, it shows, uh, if you can, if you, you know, commitment level. I think the city of Dillon is doing two thou, is it two thousand or twenty-five?
Two thousand.
Two thousand? I don't, I don't see two thousand on here. I guess that's.
That's what they're giving.
I guess, I guess that's a platinum. Platinum says twenty-five hundred on this line here. But in the past, we've, all we've done is given, uh, different council members have given money out of their recreation account. But they did request that we, they like to have the money out of the recreation account or anything they could get. But they did ask us if we would consider being a sponsor. But we've never done it in the past, so I'm just.
Does the town of Dillon want to sponsor?
I think the city of Dillon did do a sponsor, two, is it two thousand? Is that right? Okay. Because I didn't, I talked to, to clean a little bit about it. We didn't get into a big detail. But, um, I know in the past, y'all, y'all.
I mean, I always give, you know, fifty dollars out of my account or whatever it is, but if, you know, city councilmen just gave fifty dollars, that wouldn't be much, so I don't know. It's just up to the question, whatever.
Are they asking for a specific amount?
I think it was, was it two thousand? Is that right? Or whatever, or whatever they give.
I really think there's kind of like two different ones here. This one that y'all have here is from Melissa Thompson. And from what I understand in the past, that Lisa Gray has been on Melissa's team. And so it has come out of the recreation request from each one. And it will depend on what y'all want to give. I think some of them will give a hundred, some would give fifty. In the past, they said that it has been like eight hundred dollars is about what y'all gave.
How much, um, maybe Michelle can tell me, how much each councilman gives to get their name put up on the truck out there? Do you know how much that?
I don't mind. Where's Melissa?
I don't.
Where's Melissa?
Ask Melissa. Wait, wait a minute. I got Melissa here. We'll ask Melissa, because I.
And so from what I'm understanding, Janet over at the city is wanting, she's doing this also, and the city's giving two thousand. So she was wanting the county to be like a sponsor because they were going to do T-shirts and wanted to put them up here, put the name on the shirt. So I don't know. I don't know which way y'all want to go. If y'all want to do like a sponsor for the city, for the, for this, like the city's doing, or if you want to do like it's been in the past, like when Lisa Gray was on Melissa's team. Because I think each person has a team, kind of.
I think this Melissa going to check.
She's going to check. She's going to answer your questions. She's going, she's going to let us know.
Okay. Can we just go on and she'll let us know what it is going to be? Here she is here. You will just tell, just tell.
Hundred dollars.
Is that what it is?
Hundred dollars for an eighteen by twenty-four center.
Hundred dollars and then it puts your name on it.
Right.
Well, that's usually what we do at the recreation. But what else are we talking about? It's two thousand, what is that?
Corporate sponsorship. And that will get your name on the back of the T-shirts.
Does the county have any money? Does the council raise eight hundred? Does the county have any money?
I mean, that, you know, that's up to y'all, what if y'all want to do.
I'll give a hundred dollars. I will, too. I mean, I'll.
Well, you can't do it this way, but you have to do it the next.
We'll do this on the twenty-third when we meet. But y'all can think about this today and decide what you want to do. How about that?
Since we're talking about this, how do we have to come up and make decisions on doing that kind of stuff? But administrator can get these other organizations money and nobody ever questions it.
I think the only one I give is the Red Cross. I believe it's the only one I, I don't want, if I give other ones, so.
Well, just, how did you give Red Cross, which can't give these?
Well, the Red Cross goes.
My neighbors have the neighbors. They gonna bring us the paper. You gonna make the council decide.
Well, the Red Cross generally, basically, we, we team, we kind of team up with them and, you know, Randy Gris and his crowd at EMS. And so even though we give them money, they turn around and give us money back through, through stuff, you know what I mean? So it's kind of a partnership.
Why don't they give us money back on?
Well, they give us different funds back for different stuff, or they help us with different funding, different stuff out there that we wouldn't.
Mr. Gray, Gray.
No, no, I was going to say that.
I have a problem with it.
That's the difference between the Red Cross and the.
Why does council have to decide on certain, I mean, you can make decisions a little.
That's really the only one I think I, I made, I remember the other one, but that's the one that was off the top of my head. I don't know if that's the only one.
It's got another recreation fund.
Yeah.
They have control of that.
Yeah. I mean, it, it, like I said, the Red Cross generally comes out of Randy's budget, you know, on that part. You know, I mean, then council gives, you know, other stuff on that part.
We're deciding at, at our meeting, who wants to give what to the American Council Society and the council can take it back between now and our regular meeting. Now we're down to number five, new fund account.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to be very quick with that. Uh, I know Waldo Wyman are working together on that along with Richard, and, and we're trying to come up. This year with GASP's funding, I mean, GASP's, GASP's requirements, just like we had the last two years, we got kind of throwing a curve ball the last couple of years with GASP sixty-eight and then with the Affordable Care Act changes there. Uh, we probably, um, uh, GASP, well, the GFPA, Government Finance Association is requesting that certain funds be established to, to break out certain things from, this is affect all counties and cities throughout, sorry, it's not just us, you know what I mean? So we're trying to get a handle on it for next year's budget. And then, and then we're kind of hoping we can beat the curve a little bit before it finally comes out. I know, um, there's probably be at least two, three, two or three new funds created this year in addition to Fund Forty, which is our special revenue fund. Uh, this, the, the GFPA, through their GASP requirements, are asking us to break it out. It's not going to change the bottom line of the county. It's just we may break it out this year. We going, we may break out some this year and then next year we'll break out some. I know, again, next year. And then in twenty seventeen will be our GASP requirement to break out the fee and lieu requirements. So I know that that, I know we'll be diligently, we're working on the fee and lieu requirements. That'll be a new schedule for twenty seventeen that you'll have to have. And what that'll do is show how much fee and lieu, how much was actually given as a credit and then what was the final breakdown of that. So, and that's going to be done statewide. I know the association of counties been talking about that for last year or so. So that's going to be a requirement. It's going to have to be the audit and be a part of that, which, you know, we're working on that. Dillon should want to.
You got to create different accounts.
Yeah, create different funds. So, so in essence, Archie, we've been trying to reduce the number of funds. Now they're asking us to create some additional funds. So what it'll do is it'll show, even if the general fund has to fund the revenue portion of it, it'll show in the revenue that you're funding this fund and then, and it'll be allotted what I call due to and due from accounts.
So let me slow you down a minute. You're not so much creating new fund, you're creating a new account to put the funding in. You already have the funding, but they're asking you to separate the.
Well, what they're going to do is they're going to create, they're going to make you create like, like Fund Forty has been used for a special revenue account, what we call special revenue funds. And that's like the Sheriff's Drug Fund account, you know what I mean? They're going to ask you to, we've already been doing some of it already. Some, some of the counties have not done it. So what they're doing is asking us to break it even out further is what we're going to do. So the way to do that, the only way I. So the way to do that, the only way I know how to do it, the way talking with Waldo Wyman and, and, and the other people around the state is basically just create a different fund for that. So that's what we're gonna do. So I just wanna get, give you heads up, when you, when the finance committee looks at the budget this year, they may say, when they bring it back to you, I may say, well, heck, y'all created three new funds or four new funds and that's, that's.
Well, you're creating different accounts, Clay. Let's get it right.
No, it has to be fun. It'll be, it'll be in fun.
Where's the, where's the new revenue coming from? Because you're gonna have a new revenue now for GASP forty-five.
There probably won't be that much new revenue. It'll just be broken out of the general fund instead of.
Take it out of the general fund and put it to a different account.
Different fund, yeah. Not, not a different account.
I call it a account, you call it a fund. I got you.
It'll be a different fund. I, I wanna make sure it's be like Fund Forty-one. I, I don't want you to see Fund Forty-one and say, well, heck, what's Fund Forty-one?
That's what I got. Clay, since we talking about this GASP and everything, um, I noticed the audit, they charged us fifteen thousand dollars extra for that.
Right.
After you took off the five thousand dollars for the bill that was paid in July that was given to the county in December.
Right.
It brought it down to forty-seven-five. As I taught you in the finance director, I noticed there was a ten thousand dollar check that was in our January package that wasn't on the vendor report. Okay? I taught you Thursday, it was a week ago, and you supposed to call and find out where this extra ten, because you said, look, you kinda like, we might have been overcharging you.
Well, like I said, I gotta call in to Chuck. He's getting, he's, he's running it down for me.
So you're trying to find out about the extra ten, cause.
Hopefully I'll find out.
You know, the council, this is why I got on council, they agreed to thirty-two thousand one hundred dollars due to audit. But according to what we paid them so far, it's almost sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's cause of GASP sixty-eight, Affordable Care Act, and the other stuff.
I understand that part, but the other ten thousand. So when you writing council, I'll know far as what the deal is.
Well, I hope, I hope to find out, you know, as, as quick as I can. I mean, I've left a message, sent him an email, so we'll find out where exactly where it at.
If it took the council to approve these contracts with Webster Rogers, shouldn't it have took the council to came back and did any adjustment to that audit?
I think the contract says they do additional work if they're required to do additional work, you get, you.
But they have to get approved by council, wouldn't they?
I don't know. Well, like I said, I think.
Can you maybe give me a copy of the contract? I got a copy. I don't see that in their work.
Basically, if they do additional work.
They get the ad on and you can authorize it, you know? But I just wanna make sure. We're paying about sixty thousand dollars, I mean.
And I think it's gonna be going up as the future goes. I mean.
I would have a problem with that if the council voted on that to start with.
I think, I think, I think those, I think as the audit becomes more and more complicated.
If they had fifteen thousand, they should've came back to council and told us that something else had to be on and let the council, you know, up the fee on it, you know?
Let me ask you a question, Clay. The same line he had. Don't the audit tell you what they gonna charge you prior to them doing it, right?
Well, they give you a base fee that they have, if they're required to do additional work. I mean, they're basically all the way halfway in it before they finally figure out exactly what they've got required to do.
But I can agree with councilman Cal on that. Now, somebody should come out to us for that.
I will. I will. That's what you want me to do in the future, I will. I'm glad.
That ain't fair to the taxpayers of this county. Well, it's the vote to give a group thirty-two thousand and then we wind up paying on fifty-seven thousand. I mean, that's without coming back and getting approval to council, the people we have to answer to. So I just think we need to, to make sure that's cleared up, you know?
We'll clear it up.
When do you think you'll hear something back from Chuck?
I hope.
I called him a couple of times. He won't return my call.
I hope, I know they're taxes.
And what really puzzled me, when I noticed this ten thousand dollars was to the same company, but it didn't show up on the vendor report and it was under a different number.
I don't, I don't look, I didn't look at that part of it, but I'll, I'll take a look at that.
I don't have the same company with different numbers.
Well, I think they got a Myrtle Beach office in it, in that.
All the bills, I looked at the bills, all of them come out of Myrtle Beach.
Okay. Well, then I'll check on that soon.
What's that? You don't wanna push the numbers on the thing?
Well, I guess it's a question for you, but only thing I think that happened, I think we did a, a seminar with Whipster Rogers that was billed through a separate account.
That's seven more fifty dollars.
Yeah. And I think maybe that ten thousand came in, that's where she picked that up from.
But when a company comes to Dillon County, don't they have to give them all the tax number and all the ID and they set up an account? I'm just wondering why did we pay fifty-seven thousand and, and then it's, like you say, we signed an agreement for thirty-two. I mean, I just, you know, we weren't working for the taxpayers. That's it. That's all I had.
Anybody else have any questions?
Well, I got one on that. Um, do they not send you the bill, Mr. Gatt? Don't the bill's coming to your office?
No, sir.
See, I think he's gone through Clay.
They come, well, they go to finance first and then comes to me.
And I got one better than that. The county administrator paid the thirty thousand dollar bill before council ever received an audit. He authorized Mr. Gatt to pay the bill before we ever received an audit.
That's part of the contract.
To pay it before?
Yeah. As they, as they do the work, yeah.
To pay fifty-something thousand?
Well, they did, well, they did, they get in the name from us whenever.
How did they know they gonna cost fifty-something thousand before they began to do it and they'll pay the thirty-two thousand? Clay, now listen, somebody get your sausage here.
When the bill come in, you was asked whether to go ahead and pay it or not, and you authorized it.
I thought you, I thought you all were sort of, you know, I think I'll have to go back to check.
I was gonna say, if we paid them fifty-seven thousand and we got a contract for thirty-two thousand. I mean, that's twenty-five thousand dollars that we gotta ask the taxpayers about. The council, full council.
I think you gotta do it all at me, you know?
I didn't say nothing about that. I mean.
Ain't that wrong, dollars? Just the money don't make sense.
Oh, I know, I know.
How you pay, how you agreed to pay somebody thirty-something thousand and then you end up paying them fifty-something thousand before they ever do the work? That don't make sense, that.
And really, there was a bill on there that he marked off. It was really sixty-two thousand. A bill that was given to the county back in December of twenty fourteen, but he didn't pay it till July twenty-fifty. He marked that fine, so that ain't counting that. So you'd be over sixty thousand dollars we paid there in this physical year.
Like I said, you don't, you don't, like I said, you're gonna have more expenses in the future due to, due to changes at the GFOA, just, that you can probably have.
Did you have any problem getting that order to come back and explain to the full council why you overcharged us? I mean, no charges in the market?
I'm glad to see me something, or see me something about it, yeah. Glad to do that.
Cause I talked to the bookkeeper with them and they ain't earned no response. I talked to the man at Myrtle Beach, the man at Charleston, neither of them responded. Emails, phone calls.
Yeah, I'd be glad to explain that to you. Like I said, you.
And I mean, me and you and Richard was in his office when I found out.
Professional services during the year, sometimes you may run over, like I said.
And the first thing you said, you said, maybe they overcharged us.
I mean, I, I don't know that.
I know you don't know, you said, maybe they're making up things. I said, no, they overcharged us. They need to send us a check.
Oh, yeah. If they overcharge, they will do that.
Clay, let me ask you a question. I'm gonna leave it alone, cause I know we gotta move on. Why wouldn't the council agree with one thing in a contract and then turn around and that contract is broken by paying something else? I mean, how could that be right?
If you wanna come back in the future, that's fine. If you, if you.
But that's what we doing, what we doing, done.
Huh?
What we gonna do about what we're already done? I mean, we need to get that straight, what's already been happening.
We'll address that.
Twenty-five thousand dollars.
Well, we can't sell it.
We'll get it stopped next year. We'll just get it stopped in the middle of the year and then come back to council.
No, the only thing I'd like to do is from this point going on, if the council agrees on something, the council needs to be the one that has to change it. Everybody would, you need to, I agree with that. I agree with that. Do you agree with that?
Okay, that's fine.
And one more question, just before I ever got on council. Me and Stevie wasn't here, but I know about two years ago, council told you that they was tired of hearing about the payroll going out of the finance office. And you told them you was gonna change it. Do you have any plans when you planning on putting payroll out of the finance office?
How, how many years first is the payroll?
It's about two years. First, they didn't put it, but.
She didn't put it, but Jamie, if Jamie's not working, even the county council can't get their check.
I think that's happened, maybe.
Archers had that. I remember council owners had that.
That's the way.
Wouldn't it be a lot easier if we can print the other checks? Wouldn't it be a lot easier for trees to print those checks back there? Instead of having to go across the road and give them?
That would be hurt, that would be hurting.
Can, can we, can we do that?
That would, that would be up to the treasurer, not up to us. And basically what we do is we follow, we follow, and we've all, we've done the payroll for years. We've done it way back forty. We've done, we've done the payroll over here for a number of years and, and, um, and the council payable. Basically what we do is we.
Why you print the council payables check back there? We don't print the payroll check back there.
I think now we take the council payables over there.
Change printing the council payables check.
So you say she's printing out, when did that start? Last week or something?
No, it's been more than that.
About a couple of weeks ago.
Couple of weeks ago? Just a couple of weeks ago?
But that don't even look fair. How you gonna take the money in the same office, pay it out the same office, so to speak?
Well, basically she maintains.
She collects what?
Wait a minute, let me finish before I get interrupted over and over and over. The way the law is, is technically, is that she collects the money, the checking accounts in her name, not my name, not Richard's name, not county council's name. So in essence, we're doing just like we used to do back in the eighteen hundreds. We basically, only, the only difference is in the past is we would actually do up a warrant, if you wanna go way, way back, you know, even before county council. Basically, we would basically say, all these people need to be paid, you know, I mean, all the different, all the different vendor names on there. And we would take that to the treasurer. The treasurer would actually write the checks out and mail them out to the, to the vendors. The only thing we do differently is now is technically, we, since we have one set of books, we key the stuff in. We take, we don't ask her to. We could ask her to do that. Technically, we could say, hey, you know, here's, here's a list that, we could take that whole list of that, get them invoices over there and set them on her desk and say, you need to write checks for all these people. But we don't do that. What we basically, we key in the information into the system and then basically, we, you know, we send it over there to her and then she prints out the checks. So we basically, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. Instead of providing a warrant, basically, we're just keying it in the system like, like it would be on warrant. You know what I mean? So we're not doing anything different than we've done in any other county I've worked in.
Would that make it right? But wouldn't it be?
It is right. That's legal. That's the law. That ain't, that ain't, that ain't, that ain't the way it is. I mean.
Questions are, where's your segregation duty add over there?
Oh, that's, that gives us more separation.
How's that separation of duty?
Had it hurt, had, well, no, no, no.
Taking the money, you're saying that person taking the money in that office, that's their right. And that is our right.
Correct.
Then she turn around and writing the checks out of that office too?
That, let me tell you something. From, from a county standpoint, it gives you more control, because what it does is, is that we key in the information. So that's, that's one control. And she, wait, 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 wait. And she prints the checks, our staff goes and makes sure that the checks are correct, that what we keyed in is correct based on the number of checks she runs. So that gives you a check and a balance. Actually gives you more. When I was a city manager, we basically did it ourselves. So this gives us another layer of check, and that was when I was a city manager, by having her print the checks. Cause when I was a city manager, I had my finance rep to print the checks and, and send out the checks. So it basically gives you another layer of, of, no layer of control, as you would say, or another layer of checks and balances. If our staff is monitoring, if our staff is keying it in, and then we, and then she's printing the checks, it gives us another layer of control.
So do you think it would be right? The only thing I'm saying about that is, if you had, I'm not saying she is, right just now. Don't get this twisted. If you had a dishonest person doing that, couldn't that dishonest person write a check and you wouldn't know nothing about it?
Not from our standpoint.
But listen, could they write a check and you wouldn't know nothing about it if you had a dishonest person doing it?
Well, we could have dishonest person here if we wanted to, that side. But I mean, but I mean, but the thing about it is, is that.
If you got somebody writing your checks over here and, 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 and if they were dishonest, they'd write a check and you wouldn't know it. That's why you need to sef- that's why the duty need to be separated.
Why, why would, we would key it in and print the checks? Why would, we want, why would, it gives you, trust me, it gives you more control by us keying it in the system and then printing them over there.
You wouldn't want the person taking the money and be having power to spend the money too. That don't make sense. You think it's hard for them that you're banking account?
She could do that.
It's hard for them to take your money up at Wells Fargo Bank and turn around and, and they pay your bills for you too, just like that, they write your check?
She can do that anyway. Basically, what we do is when we key in our stuff, as long as we check behind it, we key in our stuff. And then when she, we, we, then when you walk over there and she prints the checks, we make sure that our checks line up with what we key in.
If you got a finance office right here, if you got a finance office, why ain't your finance man writing your checks for you? Why would you keep keying in there and then your finance man be the one writing your checks for you? Wouldn't that, wouldn't, wouldn't that be more separating the duty?
He, he, he and his staff, he and his staff key in the information.
Well, why couldn't he write the checks for you there, then key in the info? What, what would be wrong with that? Cause he's your finance director. Shouldn't, if you got a finance department, shouldn't your checks come out your finance department? Wouldn't that look more professional? And over there in your treasurer's office, all the money comes in there?
That's not the way the state law is designed. I mean, that's not, I mean, that's the way I used to do it when I was city manager.
Well, why would you have a finance man then, Clay? A finance officer. Why would you have a finance officer if you ain't gonna let the finance man write the checks?
Well, that's, we, we following the same rules they do in Kershaw, Lancaster, I mean, everywhere else in the county.
They're showing, everyone there is showing online banking. They can get online banking. Why would be wrong with the finance director Dillon County?
I, I didn't have.
Well, Clay, what would be wrong with the finance director Dillon County? Not being able to transfer the money, but at least being able to go in and look what's up under the county federal ID number. Now, Harold is the senior councilman. He's the man that told me that Dillon County's money is up under the federal ID money of the governing body. Is that be right, Mr. Moody?
That has to be that way.
Couple of years ago, we can talk about that.
It's a part of our.
Up under the federal ID number of the county council. Or, you know, the governing body. Now, what would be wrong with the finance director being able to see that? I mean, I, and also, now Jamie has access. I'm not saying she would do anything. But she has access to all that computer. And if she wanted to, she could change something in it and the council would never know it. But I'm not saying she would do that, but I'm just saying it could be. She has, she is on the master program with the company we have.
The problem that you have is we've got one set of books. And so if we, if we wanna go back, we can split the two sets of books and she could have her own set and we could have an, and we could have our set. But if we split the books, what's gonna happen is technically you're gonna come back to the same, same thing. You're just gonna go in circle. So wait, wait, let me stop. Is that, you know, if we, if we split the books up and Jamie gets her, has her own set of books, which she's legally bound, she could bound to do that if she wanted to.
And we could do what we wanted.
Basically, we could have a set, set of books. What, what you would do then is technically, what you would do is, is, is basically you would take all those invoices over there and stack them on her desk and say, you need to key these in and then you need to put, you need to pay these vendors. All we're, all we're doing, so I mean, if you wanna go that route, you can go that route.
How does this county school system work? How do they get their funds?
I don't.
Every school difference, every school difference, every school difference is different. I mean, that, when I was city manager, I was city manager for a period of time. You were.
I sure was. You know? So, you know, like I said, I've been a city manager and a finance director.
But Clay, what you're saying don't make good sense. You gotta have balances on anything you do with finance. You gotta have checks and balances. You gotta have somebody looking over somebody else, and that's all it's doing.
I think it's more, I think it's more.
You leaving room for, for, you leaving room for error there. That's what you're saying.
That's, I, I disagree with that. I think, I don't think.
You telling me, I didn't realize until today, let me make sure we clear, that you have moved the checks back over to the treasurer's office.
Just the printing of the checks.
Just the actual printing of the checks.
What was wrong with it over there? I don't know when it was over here in your office.
That's up, that's up.
Why did you make that decision? Why, I mean?
I don't, I don't, I don't make those decisions. That's what the treasurer, I mean, if treasurer wants to do that, that's.
Treasurer has authority to tell you the payroll got to be over there.
The printing of the checks.
Listen.
The printing of the checks.
The treasurer has authority to tell you that the payrolls got to be over their office. That's what they tell me.
If you'll listen, just the printing of the checks. She don't actually key in the check.
Well, what was wrong with what you were doing when the checks were being printed over there to the finance department? What's wrong with that?
I would prefer they be printed over there, but that's not my decision.
I know you do.
That's not my decision.
I know you would prefer that.
I would prefer that in Kershaw County.
And not in your finance department.
Lancaster County, every other county in Sappalines doing it that way.
But finance departments, everyone I talked to, and I've talked to them throughout the state, their finance department does that. Their finance department print, print their checks.
We didn't do it in Lancaster. We didn't do it in Kershaw.
I don't know if you do it in Kershaw or Lancaster.
Come on, man, you can call my finance department.
Three and a half years on the Kershaw, three years. You'll move?
Man, you're all in the world, you speak to the finance department.
The finance director is actually printing the checks in these counties. Can I have a name of these counties?
It ain't jammed up like we got it here. I guarantee you that ain't what I talked to. And I just talked to them throughout the state.
Which, which counties do you talk to? Cause I'd like to talk.
You know it ain't like that. You just trying to pull out.
Creveau and Charleston. All of them.
Creveau and Charleston?
Yeah.
You know it ain't like that, man, where you been? If you is, you didn't stay that long. I'm the.
I was there pretty good while. I don't, I don't think, I, I, I wasn't long off in Kershaw.
I got one more thing I wanna say. But the county council, but the county council could make the decision, the governing body, if they wanted that to come over here, is that?
I don't think you, I don't, it's up to the county treasurer to let you to print the checks over here or not.
I don't see that. I don't see that.
That's my understanding of the law.
That, that, and I've just started looking into this at the request of a few councilmen and the treasurer. But just from what I've seen so far, the treasurer receives the money and disperses the money.
Wow.
And, um, the school districts and towns are a little different because she, she, she's required to disperse the money to them so that they can spend it separately. But the county money, the money the county spends, she receives and disperses. And I, I'll keep looking into it, man, and if I find something.
Give me a, give me a statute, maybe line it up again.
Well, it's not just one statute, but I'll give you all.
The highlight rocket on the stand.
Look, that's the only way I've ever.
That's what you had want, wanted me to do, is find that out for you. And I would play it to you. I'd be glad to do that. I know that's what you had, want, wanted me to do, is find that out for you, and I'll play it to you, I'll be glad to do that.
I mean, that's the only way I've ever seen it work, I mean, I'm not saying it don't work that way, maybe in another county, that's the only way I've ever seen it work.
Why would you need a finance department?
What's the thing?
You need a finance department to basically, cuz he, that person is keying in the information, that person is making sure that the billing is right, that person's making sure that the payroll's right. I mean, all she's doing is actually just printing the check. So all, all, all the information that's being keyed in, the system's being keyed in by the finance department.
So those funds that we have...
That's why you need, that's why you need finance.
The general fund is not under the county's federal ID number.
It's under the county's federal ID number.
Don't be governing body as a whole, make decisions on that.
Well, that's something, I think, adding another resource in another snook, we ain't be able to decide on it today.
It's just, just that the treasurer by, by statute is the keeper of the money for the, for the...
Keeper of the money.
And this, and they, she receives it, she, she retains it, and she disperses it. And I haven't talked to Clay about, about this, I'm just, I've started looking into it, but I've got too many questions, some of you all. But I, I'll let you know...
But for the citizens of Dillon County, we represent, wouldn't we be better off to, you know?